All right, I'd like to call the, to order the special meeting of the Bellflower City Council is ordered Monday, May 12th, 2022 at 4:00 PM here in the chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez. Mayor Protem Santenaz.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Coops. Mayor Dutton.
Here. Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.3A, the public may address the City Council on matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on a listed item should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the City Council.
Anybody wishing to speak on this item? Let's... Ooh. Man. Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to excuse the absence of...
A second motion.
Okay, let the record, without objection, that'll be ordered. Mr. Sanchez's absence is excused. Okay, we got a study session. Let's hear it. Mr. Stewart?
Okay, this is entitled Consideration Possible Action to Approve the Recommended Changes to the Enforcement Process of Applicable Codes Carried Out by Code Enforcement Personnel and Adopt Resolution Number 22-56, a resolution adopting a general policy regarding enforcing applicable code or law, including, without limitation, the Bellflower Municipal Code, and directing the city manager and city attorney to implement such policy as practicable and superseding Resolution Number 08-64. As the council is aware, staff has been working on a pretty significant reorganization of the Code Enforcement Division for the past several months. September 1st, we actually started moving people over to the Public Safety Division, and they are completely relocated there now. The organization is more or less in effect as far as the reporting order, which would be in Public Safety. Joel Hockman in charge, Brian McNerney will be the manager in charge of Public Safety and Code Enforcement specifically, and David will remain as a Code Enforcement Manager, working for Mr. McNerney and Joel Hockman. So what we have tonight is not, we're gonna just report out on the changes that we've made to date without a lot of input from the City Council, and to get the City Council's opinions and feelings about whether those changes are acceptable, and to try to standardize those changes. In addition to that, more importantly, we're looking at what the City Council's priorities may be, so we get off to a running start on this program, and to implement any policies and changes and nuances that the council wants to do. So with that, I thought what I'd do is I'd turn this over to Joel, who'll talk about the broad overview of what we talked about in Code Enforcement, and then we'd start taking input from the City Council about what they'd like to do.
That actually concludes my report. If you have any questions, happy to answer those. No. Actually, no, it was just more a matter of kind of getting the conversation started, but I did want to make a couple of comments at least, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The idea of taking a closer look at Code Enforcement is very timely, we thought, with the reboot, I guess, that's happened here by moving over to our department. Our personnel, as you know, are very much field-oriented and very much enforcement-oriented, so the extra support for Code Enforcement has been evident right from the beginning, and we're all kind of excited about being on the same team as it relates to identifying problems in the field, getting to, you know, resolutions as best we can, and I'm looking forward to seeing how that goes. It seems to me we have been sensing a couple of general changes or notions in the, in the division is, one, the potential to get to cases and have them conclude maybe a little more quickly in some cases, if that's possible, and so that's one of the main areas we're looking for tonight, to see if that is council's direction, that the average case would be brought down to a shorter lifespan, so to speak, and that concept is represented on the second page of your staff report, and we'd be looking to find out your thoughts on that. And then, a great deal of detail in the resolution that kind of governs the overall function has been in place for many years, and to the extent you want to weigh in on those details and/or acknowledge that it's generally what, what you're interested in, we're also interested in hearing that. So, actually, without further ado, it'd be more a case of, you know, again, getting the conversation started. We feel it's more about listening in this case than it is about me talking. So, we do have people in the room that can answer historical questions or legal questions. That's kind of a newbie for us, so we'll do our best to be able to talk about what our plans are going forward, should that come up in the question and answer. So, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Who wants a...
Mr. Mayor, can I start?
Yes.
Before we start asking questions, can you walk us through in terms of what is the process that you envision in terms of, let's say, if there's a reported infraction, can you walk us through the process of that, at least we can, you know, what to expect?
And if we were to go to page two of the staff report, I think that really summarizes it well. So, you know, as we talked about historically, and of course, historically as many years and many different views of how Code Enforcement should be conducted, what we've come up with in more recent time is the existing Code Enforcement process, the middle of the page, which generally is how cases go. There are exceptions. Sometimes something will happen quicker than expected or, or not, and so the, the general process can see variances. But this is what you've been looking at for the most part over the last couple of years or so, and what we're looking at proposing is just to shorten that up, and so those people that are inclined to comply would normally just comply, and those that are not inclined normally would, you know, put their backs up and not cooperate. And so we didn't feel like we had to continue to, to engage and so on, yeah, continue to, you know, be set up for a disappointment, and so the proposed process, you can see, is considerably shorter, gets right to it, but it, but knowing full well that if somebody is working and eager and, and available for compliance, we want to get it, get it there. We don't, we don't want to go any faster than we had to, but we have a feeling there's going to be a track of individuals that really could...
And does this apply to both, let's say, Code Enforcement issue in terms of, let's say, non-maintenance of properties versus food trucks and push carts?
Great, great question. Obviously, those of more serious offenses, building issues, and so that require some more time to, to get a contractor and all those things, that's where we would have to work with. This would be a case of if they're not acknowledging anything, and then we would get more quickly to it. But those other examples, the food trucks, overgrown vegetation, you know, non-operable vehicles in the driveway, trash cans on the street, those are lesser, easier fixes, then this would be, you know, appropriate for, for that, the proposed. We didn't need to coddle them too long on just pull your cans in, you know, that kind of thing.
So, so when you say that there's going to be a verbal warning, and then the next step is seven-day notice of violation, so how much time would you give them after you give them the verbal warning until you give them the notice of violation? Is that the seven days?
It could be one in the same day. Say, we're, we're at the door, and we make an observation. We could knock and say, hey, here's our process. We'd like you just to comply, and depending on what they say or don't say, we can move right into that at the same time. If they say, I just need a weekend to get my lawn mowed, and this is a Thursday, then, you know, a lot of people mow their lawns on a weekend, you know, we'll check back, we'll check back Monday and then put the notice in the mail if we don't see what we need to see. So there's just, there's a little officer discretion, I guess. I think our, the point I'm trying to make is we're going to use maybe shorter officer discretion than longer officer discretion, and when it's reasonable to do so.
And if you recall, we just implemented the new ordinance regarding the confiscation of the products in case of food trucks and push carts. Can you talk about the success of that program?
Sure. Already, we have, to date, three times where we've impounded property from someone, and these were all perishables. Those individuals had received a warning and ignored it. Maybe they came back days later or even weeks later, and so those, those individuals lost their products, and we haven't seen them since that I'm aware of. We had a number of warnings that were given, as well as the written English and Spanish version of the, of the new ordinance, and from what I'm hearing anecdotally from officers, and Brian and David, that people are very responsive to that. That's really a good influence over whether I want to sell them Bellflower or not, in my opinion. And so that's been very effective in not having people come back.
Okay.
And then we've given out, I think, eight citations that either a company or, or in lieu of along the, along the last few weeks or several weeks of this thing. So, I think it's a, I think it's been working well.
Okay.
Now, we...
Even further, I was talking to Tim earlier today regarding the push carts, and those guys are, they're not independent contractors. They're most of them are working for a larger company. They're dropped off a flatbed truck and do business in town, and of course, they don't carry IDs, right?
Correct.
Tim was talking about how we've been enforcing that, but not necessarily trying to cite those guys, because, you know, they're just anonymous people, but to actually photograph the warning with the code and have their photos and everything in place with the pushcart, so we can go back and enforce that at a later date.
Okay.
So we're having to change our tactics based on the fact that these guys are more anonymous than they probably should be, which I think is completely in violation of the spirit of the state code. So it's just something we're having to learn how to do and learn how to crack down on as we go.
Okay. Oh, that's good.
And one of, one of the changes, I'm sorry, sir, one of the changes coming will be greater emphasis on weekend coverage, once we get the new officer hired especially, and the closing date was today for that recruitment. So we'll be interviewing very soon and getting somebody on board as soon as we can.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Hamada, you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Timing, 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 yes. I, I agree that we need to move on, on these things quickly. I kind of think of, I mean, I probably wouldn't use the reaction time to graffiti, but, you know, like, we need to take care of it, and it's got to get out, you know, within a day or two. I mean, Code Enforcement gets into more, you know, complicated cases, and, and obviously, we do need to, you know, see some kind of expanded timeline to, you know, get compliance, but I do like the compressed process. I think that's the right direction. I know personally, there's been a number of, you know, situations out there that, you know, you, I mean, first off, we, we all get the comments from our constituents, and then from there, it's, you know, the timeline to get it resolved, and if it lingers on too long, then we're, then we're talking to our constituents again. And so, I know in, in cities, you hear about, you know, are we proactive or reactive, and I just feel the staff is, you know, very proactive. They're out there looking and catching, and, but, and obviously, there's a lot of territory to cover, and to react to, or to, you know, see it all, you know, it's amazing that, you know, you guys catch a lot already, but there's stuff out there, of course, and that's where the others, that's where the other eyes and ears come in, and, and hopefully help, you know, get things moving. The, as part of the timing, now with getting to the city attorney's office and likely getting more action there, I'm looking at Tim right now, and Tim's shaking, yes, yes, and the response time there, you think it, it's, it's manageable, I would say, yes, but, you know, there's a lot of, you know, there'll be cases and cases on cases, and then, you know, obviously, priority to, you know, most severe to less, and just maybe want to hear from the city attorney's office.
As proposed, the, the reduced number of steps before cases get to the city attorney's office will certainly impact the caseload that hits the city attorney's office. What we've seen is when we, when, when my office gets involved and when letters are coming from me, it falls into the same category of people that listen, and the letter alone is to get the compliance that we need, and then there are those that, that simply aren't going to comply until you take it to the next level. And from there, we triage based on what the enforcement options are available. In some cases, we can move forward with abatement, with city personnel, and we're moving faster and doing fewer notices before we get to the point of noticing that unless compliance is achieved by a certain date, then we will move forward with abatement with city personnel. But not all cases are susceptible to that. We, we simply can't use city personnel to abate every situation, and in those cases, we look at civil process, which could be injunctive relief, civil complaints for public nuisance, in extreme cases, receiverships. But we look for the most efficient means of gaining compliance. Just one example is we have, just today, as a matter of fact, we moved forward and received an abatement warrant, was approved today for commercial truck storage at 9103 through 9111 Artesia, at the corner of Artesia and Virginia, that you may be familiar with that property. And enforcement can begin as soon as Thursday afternoon, as far as executing that warrant. And we're hoping to move swiftly in that, in that way of providing ample opportunity to reasonably comply, and if we don't get that compliance, then we act as efficiently as we can to remedy the situation. We're hoping that the warrant itself will inspire compliance after not having compliance for the last month. But we believe that we are ramping things up. We're going to become more, I don't know if aggressive is the right word, but assertive in the remedies that we're going to pursue, and if you have any questions on particular types of cases, I think I can answer those questions as well.
All right, thank you, Tim. Joel, the use of technology with, with this department, is there a need for some, I know that, I think we use a, a computer tracking type of program that we, we, we log in cases and then hopefully we can manage them better? You know, sometimes you get, you know, you can put in a date and says, okay, all these cases need to be addressed because it's now the, you know, seventh day of the violation, you know, kind of thing.
Correct.
So, what's in place now? You feel it's adequate?
Well, it's, it's been in place for a while. I know, I think there was some upgrades not too long ago in that software, so at least for now, I think we're good, but it'd be a situation where I'd like to kind of get into it a little ways and see how far we go, what we learn, and then we see if we need something different or, or would be, would benefit from something different. But right now, I think we're good in that category.
All right. Also, I've been seeing in some cities, other cities, the use of cameras more on vehicles, where, you know, I mean, the officers, you know, drive the streets, and, you know, I mean, they could physically see it, but then the camera's going to also document it as they drive, and be it junk and debris in the parkway, or maybe, maybe it could spot some kind of, you know, you know, construction issue, or, I've heard some cities are using that, and what they do is, you know, I know it, it does take more work, but it's, it's, at the end of the day, the camera's unloaded, then it's, then it's, then the film is processed, so to speak, and then somebody analyzes, goes through it and sees if there's anything that, that could be spotted else that could be, be addressed. Someone, because there's a ton of junk and debris that's been left out in, in parkways, on-site, and so on, and, and sometimes it's not until somebody, somebody sees it, and it could take days, and, and so on. So, but, but a camera spots it, and then, but someone's still got to, got to, you know, again, do the analysis and then, and confirm, and so, again, more, more technology that's out there that could be helpful in, in doing the job. Definitely, I'm open to, to hearing it out and trying to figure out what, you know, what we can do to, again, it helps speed up things, and there's documentation, of course, and then, and then if, you know, another drive through by, they don't see it, then the camera doesn't see it the next time, taken care of, kind of thing, so. So, I know things happen all the time. Sometimes it doesn't make it to the process. It gets taken care of on its own somehow, but please speak up when, when there's maybe a need for further technology that could be used, again, utilized.
Thanks, thanks for the offer.
I'm, again, some of the, again, it's, it's, it's about starting the clock on these things, so to speak, especially on non-conforming stuff, which, which, which I know is difficult. There's a lot of research that goes into it, and then the determination, and then the process there, and there are other things that have always been on my mind about, you know, you know, how's it really taken care of? For example, motel occupancies. All right, you know, that's, that's one that just kind of drives me kind of crazy, you know, you know, we, obviously, we lose out on TOT and so on and so on, but, yes, it does serve as housing, but, but, you know, is it, is it the right way? So, and some of the long-term boarded-up stuff, you know, I see more and more of it. Again, that, that timing, we just need to take care of it, get the boards, you know, hopefully a business comes in and takes care of it, but, but there is a process, so I just, we need to see it, and that's, that's, that's what it's about. So, that change, and that's where our, our constituents are also, you know, telling...
In your ear.
Yeah, needs, the needs, so. But I think, again, just in a nutshell, again, the process of, of, you know, compressing it, I think it's, it's, it's the way to go. All right? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Hamada. Councilman Coops, you got anything?
You know, when we're on council, we like to think that we're reflecting the, the needs and wants of the community, and everything we do up here, we really vent out to determine if that's the right direction. One of the biggest surprises I had is when I read some of the things on Facebook after one of the street vendors at one of the off-ramps was removed, and there were more people in our, on the Facebook pages commenting that we had done the wrong thing. That two people commented, what a great deal, you know, to have this cleanup. There were about 30 that said, leave him alone, he's trying to make a living, you know, and so I want to make sure we're really reflecting the needs and wants of the community, or there, is there a silent majority out there that agrees with what we're doing and is not on Facebook? But I'm sure you guys read the comments, and probably as surprised as I was to learn, I expected the converse, two that would say, yeah, you're doing the right thing, and 30 would say, you know, you're doing the, you know, but it was just something I wanted to bring out, that as we go forward, I'm all in agreement with what we've decided to do here, but we continue to have to be somewhat sensitive to those in the community that are not on board. And maybe that's true of everything we do in this, in this chamber, but I just thought I'd make that known, because you, did you guys read what, you know, and were you surprised by it? Or not really? Okay. Hold on. Please do.
I, I, I think it's a matter of context, because people don't understand that street vending is not, is not, it's permitted in the city. Let's kind of emphasize that it is allowed in the city. The only thing is, they have to be permitted, and that's the key. A lot of people don't understand that, so we need to kind of educate them. It is allowed, but it needs to be permitted.
No, and I think education is probably, because I don't know if we've gone out on that place yet with our, and as mentioned earlier by the city manager, many of these sellers are dropped off a flatbed truck. They have no knowledge of who they work for or what they do, except have the cash at the end of the day. They're not aware of what it is to make it right.
It's not so much the push carts, it's the stands. It's the, I tend to, it's stands that pop up at the corner.
No, and, and you'll see them on Saturday, Sunday, in certain places.
They're blocking the right of way. It's a no-brainer.
Right, but when they're standing with a group of fruits and vegetables and flowers at the off-ramp of the freeway, I think that was the one that was commented on.
Well, that's one, yeah.
You know, and I think as a merchant or an ex-merchant, that we have a responsibility to those to have a brick-and-mortar store.
Right.
I mean, that, they made a commitment to be in our town and pay all the things that are necessary to conduct business. So when someone comes in and says, you know, I'm freelance, we have to look at that, but there was a lot of the, you know, and this is maybe true of many things we look at, but we're trying to make the town better, but at the same time, I don't want to be the Gestapo, you know? You know, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Coops. Right now, when we do Code Enforcement, it's just, is it mainly 95% of, of calls we get to do stuff, or is it some of this stuff is, is driving down the street, you see dead vegetation, overgrown vegetation, and somebody notes it? Do other, does Public Works see something, then send it to Code Enforcement, or is there anything like that goes on, like, because there's more than one agency within the city, the city government that drives the streets. I would like to see that, you know, that all departments that are out there like to notice things, and what Ray's idea was with the camera was, was a good idea if there's a software that can filter that as they drive around, but, but, you know, the graffiti guy is taking down graffiti, and, and then he sees, you know, dead vegetation. I don't know how many new buildings we've had, and two years later, the vegetation's all dead, or all overgrown.
Overgrown.
I mean, what's the, I guess, what is the, the most way of, how is it get, get a Code Enforcement to look in, look into it? Does somebody have to pick up the phone and call, or is it that, within that department, that is like what Ray says, pro, proactive, and they write a list? Because I would think with the small Code Enforcement people we have, there's probably just enough there to do the call, you know, the calls. Because there's online, there's, there's, there's some great Bellflower citizen warriors out there that will go take their morning walks, and they'll come back and they'll put three notes in there in a week. We all have seen that in our update. So I guess my question is, is to use, how, how do the calls get generated?
Right. I don't have the proportions over the years of where all the work is done, whether it's complaint or self-initiative or other departments, but I can assure you that it has gone on in the past where different departments are reporting to each other. Code Enforcement, Public Works, and Public Safety have been real good about exchanging jobs. If we can pick something up, we do it. If it's beyond us, we get Co-, or Public Works to help, and there's a lot of good cooperation there. What I can also assure you is, going forward now with our CSOs engaged, that's going to be a whole lot more people not just looking for things wrong and reporting it, but they will be involved in fixing those things.
I think his answer is it's about your priorities.
It's the eyes and ears.
Yeah, periodically, if we find that there's a need for, to go after the overgrown or non-maintained vegetation, that's periodically, we're just going to have to do that. And we traditionally have not done that necessarily with vegetation. That'd be really bad, but, I mean, over the last several months, we've realized you're exactly right. We've noticed some newer buildings where the vegetation volume has ran stuff, and we've had to address that. I think, I think those are the kinds of things that we're just going to have to get after until the, the problem is resolved, and then it goes away.
It's a big issue, but we don't, we gotta nibble at it. It's like eating the elephant, you know, we gotta one bite at a time.
You start with the most visible corners, and you move outward, and then over the period of time, hopefully it gets better, and then we don't have to do it so much, but...
Because there's actual businesses on major intersections that the landscaping's been dirt for decades, and we know it never was always that way. It's, you know, broken, they don't even turn irrigation on, let alone fix it.
I think that, I don't know the right solution to that. I think periodically, Joel and his staff are going to have to come in and say, for this quarter, we want to focus on these sorts of things.
Yeah, it's overwhelming to, you know, it's overwhelming, there's, there's so much out there that...
Because I could think of 15 different areas they could focus all day on, and you know how that goes. And so I think we're just going to have to do it, eat the elephant one bit at a time.
I'd like to ask Elizabeth, Beth, if you want to come up here and question? So in the past, has it, has it been mainly just the calls that come into City Hall or the internet invites? Bad?
I would say, sorry, Mayor and members of the council. I would say the majority is reactive, meaning we get complaints, we open up cases. That's usually the majority of the cases that we have open. If there's something that's egregious, then that does become a proactive case, but I would probably say the majority of the cases are complaints from the community.
Yeah, and if anything happens here tonight, I'd just like to see the 30-day notice go away, because the 30-day notice, you got to correct something. It's like, because it's not written on here, but we've given out several 30-day notices in the past. We've let people go to 30 or 60 days for Code Enforcement, but it's not here in the, in the existing. Am I right? There's, am I wrong?
You're correct, Mayor. Yes, so the policy...
But our existing here only says it was a 10-day notice, but I know we try to do that, but I guess you must have the, if you look at a situation, if it's, if it's that much, you have the authority to go, give it 30 days or 60 days? Is that the case?
That's correct, and there is some discretion that's involved. A lot of times, we'll be working with businesses, and they have to get rid of a ton of tires, and usually... and usually, you know, if they need more time, but we see that there's progress being made, a lot of times, the officers do give them extra time because they are showing some progress. Um, those do tend to kind of linger on, so to say, um, but it, it, it always depends on the scenario. But we have been pretty generous sometimes in terms of giving extra time where people need it.
Say like there's a, you picked tires as an example. Takes a long time to get away tire, get, get, somebody to get rid of tires?
You would think not.
Well, I know better, that's why I'm asking. Somebody's been, taken advantage of code enforcement, if you've been given to more than seven days to get rid of tires.
You would think not.
They just didn't wanna spend the money that they collected from the person to get rid of them.
Yes.
I'm sure there's other examples.
There's a tire disposal fee that they charge on every tire. Anyway, just saying. Great, that's kinda what I thought, I thought more mainly it was just you're being reactive, or whatever, but I, yeah, I'd definitely like to see a little more proactive in the future, and then, and have the other departments see something that's egregious to notify the proper department.
What we're looking at doing, um, Mr. Mayor, is with the C S Os again, um, some of the easier stuff, like we mentioned, the vegetation, the inoperable vehicles, trash cans, those are things C S Os easily, while they're out doing their job, street sweeper and all that, can be noting, and not just dumping it then on the code inspectors, but handling it. So they will be involved in getting to Brian, and Brian can, um, you know, use them for re-inspections or letters will be sent, you know? So we're not putting more work on the existing personnel, we're expanding the personnel that are doing the work. And so that's, I think, gonna be helpful for the, the easier stuff, that the shorter turnaround time stuff, so.
What would trigger extra time, I'm curious? I know in the past, we have been fairly loose on some of that stuff, but I think that's where the council's going to. I mean, what would trigger you from going from seven days to fourteen days, for instance?
Ooh, um, so, don't, yeah, it's all, well, I will say case by case. I think the takeaway is, if there is a need for some extra time, let's be more stingy on that extra time than generous.
I think our issue there is, we don't notify, um, we have our timeframes, cases started, and we don't notify the different timeframes as we make amendments to it, and I think we need to start doing that better than we do.
Notifying to?
The status of cases, when we go through the status of cases. So, I mean, I don't know, and the council may tell you tonight, they don't want any discretion on that, just keep going after them until they bark, I don't know.
Well, I'm sure going forward, we won't be a hundred percent, uh, on anything, but we're just gonna try to do better. I think we can do better, I think we can be quicker, I think we can get more done, again, with the additional resources that we have and, and eagerness to get to conclusions, like our department already has been about, as you know, towing, ticketing and fireworks. We've always been among the most assertive, excuse me, in the region, so I think that'll continue.
Do we catalog the furniture dumping in the parkway at all to, or the existing code enforcement, catalog it in a way that they have a perpetual problem in one of the multi-big apartments? Maybe Elizabeth can probably answer that one.
Yeah, all the historical questions, I think, I'm guessing no, uh, but as she walks up to the mic.
Yeah, yeah, might wanna stay there.
Sorry, Mayor, I missed that question.
Yeah, so the, you know, we have the parkway dumping of furniture around the, around the thirty-first and the thirtieth at the end of the month, or the first, and we know it's, if it's on a weekend, it's really a problem. Do we ever catalog to, in a way that, that one, you know, every month for the last three years, it gets a, you know what I mean, if, if, is there a big problem at one, at certain places?
If there's a consistent.
I see the furniture out in front of certain places. Do we ever note those buildings that this, that furniture's in front of, as always having it there every, at the end of the month?
Yeah.
And do we ever?
There are some.
Go to, talk to the property management company and start saying, "You got a code enforcement problem here."
Mm-hmm, we do, um, there was a case, it was in a residential neighborhood, where one of the neighbors consistently called every time there was furniture out. And so I, usually, um, there is an officer assigned to a certain area. So if they see multiple calls for furniture dumped in the right of way, they know it's a recurring thing. Sometimes they're able to link it to a specific property, and then start engaging with that property owner about, you know, what, what our bulky pickup schedule is and how to call for it. And we had one recently where it was in a residential neighborhood, um, and there was a complaintant that lived in the area that started noticing a, a residential, and I'm not sure if it was an apartment building or a single-family home, but there was consistently dumping going on in front. And so there was a case that was initiated against that property owner for it.
Okay, so it's kinda, it's kinda rare, but it happens.
It happens, and usually, you'll see a pattern, and then the inspectors would pick up on it and then try to figure out where it's occurring, if, is it actually dumping? Or is it that property owner, that condo management company that's allowing it to occur continuously?
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, if I can add, that's not rare, because there, there's a certain spot in the city that I'm very familiar with.
Well, we all are.
It's on Beach Street, south of Beach Street, from Clark all the way where Beach banks into Balfour.
By the church?
By the church, so, because every Sunday, there's always furniture there.
On the freeway side?
On the freeway side.
That's because it's, it's, no, there's no, nobody can watch it.
It's no man's land.
Yeah, it's no man's land, there you go, good example.
So I've been working with Public Works about that, and we even created a flyer, uh, for those apartment owners.
Yeah.
I think that the intent was, it's rare that we're able to really get at a property, if I understand correctly. It's not rare that there's illegal dumping, that's going on frequently all over, and, um, getting to a place where we can try to attach to a property owner, that's, that's a tough call, 'cause if, if I were doing it, I'd certainly put it in front of somebody else's property, you know, so.
Anyway, I have an idea for that, and I don't know if it's a place to share it or not. City attorney would shut me down, probably.
Looks to me like everybody gets a new mattress whenever they move. I see more mattresses than anything on the parkways, you know?
And fridge.
Yeah, that's another famous one, yeah.
They don't make fridges like they used to.
No.
See more on the street.
Yeah, they're all, they're all ninety-day refrigerators, yeah.
Any other questions, did we, did anybody get?
I have another question for Joel, back to Joel. I'm really glad that we're combining code enforcement with, um, C S Os. I, I think it's gonna give you a lot of, um, manpower, so to speak. So can you talk about the coverage or staffing, especially at nights and weekends, especially during the summer?
Right, it's been, again, as we look at history, it's all over the place. There were a number of months where the only, I'd look at a monthly report of our C S Os working, and there would only be a couple hours in a twenty-four-hour day that we didn't have somebody sometime during the month working. And so, you know, from one A M. to three A M., we didn't have somebody, but we had people all other hours. And, uh, what we'll probably need to do, given the new situation, is, um, try to ensure we have, uh, good coverage at night, uh, not too many people, you know, stepping on each other in the daytime, and involving code enforcement inspectors, and look at what they've done on the weekends, and maybe push things a little later. If, if garage sales are still an issue, that's why they would start earlier in the morning. If that's not quite the current problem, then maybe they start a little later in the day and go a little later into the evening. We, we just kinda have to get into it and see where the needs are. But the cool thing is, we have a lot of flexibility with part-time employees, full-time employees, people accustomed to working weekends and nights, so I think that's gonna really help.
Yeah, especially with unpermitted vendors, I mean, they really come up at night and on weekends, because they know there wasn't much coverage during the night and weekends.
Right, and, and Ray let us know about one last, last night about eight o'clock, I got a, a call or a text, and, uh, we didn't have anyone at, at that hour on a Sunday night. So the sheriff responded in about thirty-seven minutes, and, and the log said they were packing them up, so.
Okay.
Uh, that was good, but it's, it would be nice to rely more on our city folks as far as, you know, vendors, for instance. I think we can be a little more about what council wants to do than a random patrol deputy as far as taking things and so.
Well, I think initially, it's gonna be part of this program that, uh, we kind of take advantage, you know, take care of it, so that they get notice that, oh, you know what, we cannot, um, it's not, um, uh, Balfour is not very inviting for unpermitted vendors, and the word gets around.
Yeah.
So, so hopefully, they will go somewhere else. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Mr. Hamada, you got anything to add?
Just, uh, just one more on, um, the repeat offenders, uh, the process there, like, uh, and what I've heard in the past is, or if there's a violation, uh, time to take care of it, take care of, and then, um, let's say, a year passes, or six months, or whatever, and then it happens again. Do we start the same process over, or can we go right into, right into Tim there to, to deal with, uh, something? Or the citation?
I can probably help out with this question, too. If it's within a year period, um, it allows, uh, the current code, it allows us, a year.
All right.
It allows us to cite and keep going up the ladder.
Yeah.
In terms of citations.
But one year, one day later, we go through the same thing again, right?
Well, wouldn't, uh, if it's the last cite, wouldn't it be a year from the last citation? It just keeps moving forward, would it? Yeah, so, right? Yes, I'm hearing a yes from the audience.
All right, good, good.
So it keeps moving forward, it's a floating year.
All right, okay, all right, good. All right, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Coops, you got anything to add?
I'm okay.
You're okay?
Yep.
My question is on the, the proposed new code enforcement. So you get a seven-day violation, you don't comply, and then it goes to administrative citation or citations. What would be the length of the time, is it discretionary before it refers to the city attorney's office?
Well, I'd like to have a little discretion in there if we could, but, uh, because we are enforcement-oriented, we're not gonna dawdle on that, I think we can get a couple of sites or so, and then, then maybe contact Tim's office and see if we're not getting the effect we want, and maybe, maybe he would say, "Let's do another site," or something or two, and then, at that point, it's more of a discussion, yeah.
And it depends on how egregious the problem is?
Sure, and how much, how visible, that's another, how visible the problem is, and how many complaints, and.
Mayor, it also, uh, it depends, it's, it's fact-specific to the case. There are some people that, um, uh, administrative citations are a pressure point to get compliance. There are others that are never going to pay it, they're judgment-proof, and it just doesn't matter. And in those cases, it could get elevated to the city attorney's office much quicker.
Especially if we've had prior, um, dealings with that individual? Would it be, would it not be the type of business, but the type of person, would you say, that runs the business that?
It's the individual more, I, I mean, these could be homeowners on a, on a single-family residence enforcement, and they just don't care, and we can rack up twenty thousand dollars in citations, and nothing's gonna change.
How long would it take you to figure that out, if you're issuing citations? I guess that's my question.
I, I think, generally speaking, well, first of all, we need to know whether they're getting them, so it takes time to mail them to see if they're returned or not.
I got it, I got it.
And, and then from there, we try to give a chance to see if they, they, they come in. We've had them where they come in, you know, a week or two later.
Right.
Um, where they, where they respond, um, and, and then if we get that response and they show good faith effort to comply, then we suspend the citations. In other properties, we know that it's probably a pressure point, and we'll cite every day until we get compliance.
Right.
If, until the city attorney's office gets involved.
Right.
In some cases, they're out of the country or whatever, and they didn't know they had citations, and some of that's probably a reality, I would think.
But, but if I can jump in here also, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we also know who the scoff laws are. I mean, these are repeat offenders, and there have been more than one time in my career where I actively prosecuted code enforcement cases where, let's just call them who they are, there's slum lords out there that we know, they know what the process is, they know what the law is, and to, to Mr. Camp's point, they don't care. And under those circumstances, we may skip the fines altogether and just go right to court, either criminally or civilly, because why waste everyone's time with regard to something that we know is not going to achieve voluntary compliance, and those individuals will only maybe respond to a court order or persons showing up at their front door with guns. I'll be real honest about that.
And to, um, Councilmember Hamada's point about, when does it get to the city attorney's office and, and the steps? Um, we, we have a, a, really, one, maybe two slum lord-type conditions where the history isn't within the last year, but we have established history, uh, with the property owner. And when we encountered, uh, a pretty significant, um, habitation issue with, with mold and multiple units and all kinds of problems, we skipped all of these steps, went straight to the city attorney enforcement and, and got immediate response. So the, the situations dictate how much time, uh, we may spend on each of these steps, but the overall, uh, approach is to dramatically shrink the amount of time it takes to get to the city attorney's office if there is a lack of compliance.
All right.
Mayor, just one more thing.
Yeah, there's a clerical error. Right, so the, we're on page. Yes, page twenty of your packet, in the numbering system at the bottom, there was an item B, subsection two, where it reads, "Where ongoing efforts to maintain compliance are not required." Not sure what happened.
What does that mean?
Yeah, so the, the intent was, "Where ongoing efforts to maintain compliance are not successful." So then there needs to be city personnel resources brought in. So we'll have to reword that to be, uh, to fulfill the intention, which is what you're hoping it would be. Yeah, good catch, good catch.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more.
Yes, go right ahead.
On page sixteen, Joel, uh, under eight A, the last sentence, there was something I, I, that. Thank you, Mr. Pray.
Page sixteen, eight A.
Mr. Mayor, pro Tim on, on that, I forgot that. Is that a typo, it's, uh, from, at the end there, where it says, "From issuing more than infraction, one infraction citation to a violator?" Should be just more than one infraction citation?
If, if necessary, more than one can be issued, nothing would preclude that from happening?
The word "infraction."
The word "fraction."
The first word "infraction" there on the second to last, that's a typograph error.
That's a typ, all right, yeah.
Got it?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So one thing that came up is, is proactive versus reactive, and then in the, the staff report, the suggested changes is kind of, it's how you interpret it, and it's, you know? So I'm gonna ask, how we, do we wanna be extremely proactive? I mean, we gotta give staff some kind of, I, you know, how do we wanna tell them to?
Let me jump in on right away. It's been one of mine. What my expectation is this, um, first of all, I want the complaints to be addressed right away. That's number one. If there's a complaint from a resident, from city council, from anyone else, that should be addressed right away. And then secondly, to make sure that those are addressed, uh, elevated to prosecution or to city attorney as soon as possible. And number two is, I like the word here that was used, um, in number eight on page twenty, proactive patrol of all areas of the city. And, and I've been, I'll be very honest, um, I was very disappointed in the past, because you have to be blind not to see some of those, uh, overgrown vegetation, and it took me a long time to get those addressed. I, I don't want the city, city staff to be looking into homes, uh, employing a, a lot of, um, tools just to find infraction, that's not the way you want. I want a person, I, I want a city staff to be reasonable. What can a reasonable person see on the street? If a reasonable person can see this violation, you should be able to see it. That's what I expect you to see, and I will start from that.
And I, yeah, and with that said, I'd understand that there's gonna be a ramping up of the new department, mentioning with public safety, to get there, and then, you know, like you say, you don't have, you're looking to hire another guy, we don't even know if that's enough, um, so. But I just wanted to try and to get the council what they want, you know? Yes, you can put something on paper, but what is it really, the intentions? Yes, you can put something on paper, but what is it really, the intentions? You know, how bad, you know, you can, you can hit something with a little hammer or you can hit something with a big hammer. And that's what I'm trying to weigh, I'm trying to take the temperature up here so staff has the direction, you know?
Well, if, if
I would like to, you know.
If it's been reported, let's use the big hammer right away.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, that's me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that what I see personally, and vegetation may bother you a lot, is when you go by a property and after seven or ten days, there's still furniture in the parkway. That, and I think to myself now, should I call that in? We've got a sweeper guy, we've got a guy following the sweep, we've got all kinds of activity going on in the street and no one reports it. Now, am I wrong, am I seeing something that the rest of you aren't seeing?
No, because I get it, I get it too. You have your constituents saying, hey, I just watched the sweeper go by that, I saw the public works counting the trees down the street and the sidewalk grinder go by it. I mean, they, they, I get it all the time, how come, and then I end up calling it in.
Well, the impression would, you know, they're driving by with one purpose is, is did somebody call in this for bulky item pickup or whatever? So sometimes there would just be not a focus on what the cause of this thing is, but, you know. Sure, this is a, it's a two-point-oh, you know, code enforcement two-point-oh, so we've got to expand duties and, and all of that. So they'll, they'll be having an eye for certain things that they weren't necessarily focusing on.
Yeah, well, this is not the, the form for bulky item pickup, we know that that's a problem, but it is a code enforcement issue. I mean, maybe we need to have, you know, have another study session on just bulky item pickup and where to go.
I, I think, I think
I have some ideas.
Your thoughts are right, and it's not just bulky item pickup, it's lots of violations. I mean, and then we've heard this from residents over the years, I know I have.
Trash bins overflowing.
Yeah, that they see these things that are clear code enforcement issues or should be. And there's lots of people driving by it, not reporting on it and code enforcement, but there's only a handful of guys driving by it. They may or may not see it, but between parking control and code enforcement, but they should see it. I guess, I think that's the concern.
Don't forget public works.
And public works, yeah.
But as, as you're talking about something junky out on the sidewalk or whatever, that, you know, code enforcement would send a letter and, you know, next thing you know, we're days in and you're already upset about that, so it's a matter of picking.
But don't, just focus on that, there's abandoned cars, there's overflowed trash cans, trash cans left out, a thousand things that
Sure, sure.
that anybody could see as they're going over the course of scope of their duties. And I think that's what the council's looking at, some kind of coordinated activity there as opposed to
Sure.
just waiting for somebody to call in and gripe about it, so it's.
And, and I, and Roger that, but as it specifically relates to trash out there, I mean, is there an expectation that the city picks up every bulky item in the parkway as they see? Or that's a whole, whole thing?
I'll give you an example, I get, I got an example here.
I just want to make sure everyone's clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Within a couple of days.
Well, no, yeah, I got, I got an example, so, you know, say the, the code enforcement officer is, is, or the street sweeper ticket guy, let's say, is driving by and he drives by a bus stop. And we see somebody slept there all night or lived there all weekend, and you see, and then, you know, you've seen it, the trash all over the place. Well, maybe he should, he's not probably equipped to clean it up. Maybe he should make a phone call to another department and flag it, who we need to get somebody because now a resident can't, won't even go near that much, you know? Just seeing the trash, I wouldn't feel safe. You know? That happens a lot.
That's for sure.
I know you know. They call you, but that, that kind of stuff happens and, and maybe it's, you know, it's the interaction of, let's do something with this now.
To the average, and we've heard people say it from the dais, the average, the thing that, and, and that concerns residents is that, you know, we're not the collective mindset. But it does annoy people when city staff drives by stuff and they don't say anything, and the person that's responsible for it doesn't see it, so it doesn't get done. And I think that's what they're, they're looking at breaking down.
And I, and I really believe in a lot of people that do drive it down, probably write something down when they see something, they actually write an address down and a note to take care of, to pass it on. I believe that goes on, but maybe it needs to go on a little more.
That's what I'm hearing.
I think furniture in the street is a big deal, and
It's a big deal.
it's not there, when it's not picked up regularly, and I think that, that does need to be picked up quickly.
I called in Stapanyan, took me five days to get a desk picked up in front of a residence. By the end of the week, when five days had passed, I had three desks, two more had shown up because suddenly I became the place to dump desks.
Right.
Kind of like graffiti, if you don't take care of it right away, it grows.
Or the broken window principle.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's one of my pet peeves too, so I get it, yeah.
Okay. Anyway, does sta, does staff have enough information on our direction, I guess, from the dais?
For now, we do. I think it's going to morph, I mean, we're going to be good at some things, not so good at others as we go forward. I think we have to do this periodically. We're just going to have to come back and do it.
Right, well, there's a lot of work to be, be done, I mean, the, the department's just, we're changing right now. It just can't change overnight.
And, and I think there's going to be some growing pains.
Reevaluate in six months or something like that, you know.
But a good starting place is this proposed process? These are just average cases, not highly complicated proposed, yeah. That's the message I needed to hear, so.
I wouldn't want to go any tougher than that right now, I feel good that's, it's strong. Let's see how it works. Is that what you guys agree?
Yeah, no, it's
Right, and, and you've educated us on how it is, that there's all different situations on time, linked with time. Some of that stuff, the homeowner's there, he understands, he fixes, another guy lives in Bolivia and he's not getting his mail. And we have to work with that, so, different strokes.
Sometimes getting a contractor, you know, there's, there's all kinds of reasons why things take a while, but the message is let's not be too generous on our giving of extra time when it's reasonable to say no, needs to be sooner than later.
Well, I'm, with Ray knows tires better than any of us because he sells them all the time, so he knows the story of how those things are collected, and people don't want to give up the money they collected for recycling. And they, and it doesn't take much to get rid of those tires with a phone call.
No, and then, and a little side note is whether, some of those tires are still good. Sometimes you have customers that take them off too soon. And they haven't went out and looked at them and matched them up to sit the good ones over here to sell as used tires. That's, that's the
What's, what's the motivation to keep them? I don't think I understand that, I mean, whatever.
Well, they kept the money and they don't have to give it to their guy.
Oh, I see, I see.
Valuable, yeah.
That makes sense, yeah.
It's like trading pop bottles, you know? Put it in our jargon, huh?
Was a bad example.
So we looking for a direction or are we looking for a vote?
So, we do have a resolution here that we do, would like to get adopted. My question to the council is, do you want to adopt it? You want to hold off and do a full vote of the council at the next meeting? It's your call, however you want to do that. All right.
Mr. Mayor and council, um, on page sixteen, item seven, under multi-department cooperation, there's a list of things there that, um, we are recommending be part of different departments within the city. Um, what's not listed there is the reporting of violations by different departments out in the field when they see them. Would you like to add that as a priority within inter, inter, uh, multi-department cooperation?
Part of our discussion, several of us.
The answer is a, a yes with a capital Y.
Yeah, I figured as much.
But thank you for catching that.
So then I guess the recommendation for staff
Did you make a motion, was that a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I was just going to say the recommendation for staff, if you're good with that, to, to, uh, make a motion as amended.
Someone, Mr. Mayor, like to make a motion for the city council to adopt resolution twenty-two thousand fifty-six as amended?
I'll second that.
Does that include approving the proposed changes to the code enforcement process?
Yes, uh-huh. With the proposed changes to the code enforcement process.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor by Mayor Pro Tem, Sunny Santaniz, and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Santaniz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay, we're done here, um, I'm going to call for adjournment at, uh, five o'clock.